Come on, Josh.
Come on in.
What happened to the jeans?
Oh, I hate it.
I slipped my heels and they were gone.
You have to bring them around.
Yeah, I guess.
Love it. It looks bigger, doesn't it?
It does look bigger, man, with the flowers, that's nice.
That, that's your meeting?
Yes.
Library?
Four thirty.
Same time.
Okay. We're gonna go ahead.
I, I, I didn't, because it was, last one I had was May ninth, I didn't look at them.
Okay, oh, okay, I was gonna say, because I did respond to your email, I realized there was a question behind it.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and reconvene as the Board of Commissioners, and then we're gonna recess for the public hearing. How about that?
All right, so, what we have here, and, you ready?
The public hearing is second, you have an item before that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. We're not in the public hearing yet.
Oh, we're, oh, that, it's like.
No, yes.
Okay.
It's regarding a.
We're gonna reconvene as the Board of Commissioners.
We'll get it together, right?
We'll do the journal entry first.
Yes. Okay, so what we are doing, we have a project in the Village of Manaway. It's a, improvements are being proposed to a small block of buildings located on the east side of Main and North Prospect Street. Um, the block building, block of buildings is currently accessible only if I set up uneven and steep stairs with no railings for protection. There, there, the, the project's comprised of two parts, one being, they want to rebuild the sidewalks and steps, um, create a new patio area with the canyon wall, and set the steps to the new patio and walkway level, along with an ADA compatible access ramp at the north end of the walk. ADA parking will be added near the ramp entry, and they're gonna provide continuous railings with handrails at the stair and ramp that also be included. The estimate for this part of the project is one hundred eighty thousand forty-one dollars. The second part of this project, they are, they're, um, they wanna restore the, renew the storefronts and facade of the building, including masonry restoration of the storefront. That piece is estimated at a hundred and seventy-five thousand sixteen dollars, so total project amount is three hundred fifty-five thousand fifty-seven dollars. The maximum grant amount that we can request under the Downtown Revitalization Target of Opportunity Grant is two hundred and fifty thousand. Of that, which includes twenty, up to twenty-five thousand for.
Administration.
Administration.
Oh, administration.
Um, the applicants or the owners of the, um, building will be required to commit, um, money towards the part of the, or the difference, if action in this particular case will have to commit the difference.
And they're in a position to do so?
Yeah, I've got commitments in writing, um, actually, um, from each of the property owners.
Okay.
Or business owners. We need, uh, we are requesting permission to submit a pre-application for, for the Downtown Revitalization Target of Opportunity Program. And pre-applications, they can, the state will start accepting them starting on the fifteenth.
Okay. Think it'd be great.
Yeah, this is related to the Restoration Project, Restoration Forty-four Project, they had to pay there.
Yeah.
And then they also, the Restoration.
Push your shop?
Push your shop, yeah, so it's the same people.
It's looking real good there.
Really nice once they get it completed.
Yeah, that does a real nice job.
Yeah.
Okay, so you need to approve a journal entry.
That's right. Board of Commissioners moves to authorize, Chris, Sabrina Christian Bennett, President of the Board, to sign the pre-application Downtown Revitalization Two Thousand Twenty-One Target Opportunity Grant, and allow the Portage County Regional Planning Commission to submit pre-application on behalf of, as presented by the Regional Planning Commission.
Second. Role call, Tony?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Sabrina? Yes. Okay, um, we'll recess the Board of Commissioners, and we will go into the public meeting for the Critical Infrastructure Grant for Maple Grove Road and Wyndham Village.
Yeah, at ten thirty.
Oh, it, oh, is it ten thirty?
Yeah, it's public hearing.
We have fifteen minutes for this.
Ten minutes, but.
Oh, okay. At ten thirty, we'll do this, so stay tuned. We'll recess, I guess, until we're done.
With those grants, how long does it usually take to, once the application process, how long does the state take to?
When we submit a pre-application, usually within a whole week, still notify us and let us know that the full application can be accessed through, through the state. Once it's submitted, usually they give us like three weeks to really pull it all together and submit the application, but usually within, I don't know, a month.
They can feasibly start in August or September.
No, they have to do the competitive bids.
Well, not only that, you have to do a warrant, a review, and obtain release of bonds, and then we gotta certify and appropriate the grant funds through the county.
You know how government is.
So sometime this winter.
So, it'll probably, if, if I had to give a wager, it'd be early next year before we'll be able to get a part of the year.
Look at your first term.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, things don't quite move as fast as we'd like sometimes, but we have a process we go through.
I just wasn't aware of how long so.
Yeah.
Six, seven months, eight months.
So, if you want, we can give you an update on the subdivision, what am I saying subdivision, the Conference of Plan Vision Plan.
We're actually recessed, so do you want to reconvene?
Reconvene and let them use the ten minutes.
Yeah, go for it.
Reconvene Board of Commissioners.
This is just an informal update, so basically, we sent out letters to all the, all the mayors, all the township trustee presidents, you know, throughout the entire county, including, we even included Talmidge and Magg, since they're partners in Portage County. Um, as we discussed before, we want twenty, twenty or so folks in, on the vision plan, and then twenty or so folks on the con plan with some crossover in between. And, you know, that's what we got, or that's what we're shooting for, we're asking them to respond to us by the twenty-fifth of June. Um, the vision plan meeting will be July eighth, we haven't had, we don't have a location yet for that, you're on the vision plan.
Okay.
And we don't have a place yet or a time for that, but we'll set one of those, we have the game plan all set up for how that's gonna go. And then the con plan will meet, uh, at the end of, towards the end of July, and, and they're gonna do their kind of things, you know, parallel, but the, the vision plan will be ahead of the con plan, because the con plans are actually implementing what the people from the vision plan recommend. And it's gonna be exciting.
I think it's gonna, I'm excited to see it.
It's gonna be really exciting, so, you know, so a couple of the townships already wrote back and said, can I sit there zoning inspector, because we're too busy to do these things. And I'm just, I'm, I'm like, of course they can, you know, they can send over what they think's appropriate, but I would really like to get as many elected officials in there as possible. I think the other important thing, too, um, with that con plan, which is something we haven't done before, but I think is really important, because it's such an important, um, plan for the entire county, is we're gonna do the thirty, sixty, ninety day, um, complete, and send that out to all the agencies, all the communities, and say, here, like thirty percent would basically be the existing conditions, the sixty, sixty percent would probably be with all the projections, and then the ninety percent would be when we, now we've got, you know, we've got our existing, we've got our projections, and this is the kind of, this is what we're hoping to accomplish. And as, it's that finalized, so give us your feedback, so everybody's gonna get a chance to give feedback, we're gonna make that as public as possible. We're gonna have something at Arlen Main in, in, early August to help pick that up, we're gonna have something at the county fair, we're gonna have a community survey online for the entire county to participate in, so, you know, we want as much public input as possible. You know, it's hard to get public inputs, click to these things sometimes, just because people are busy themselves, but we're hoping that we can really narrow the part.
When you, when you have, uh, the, uh, the meetings, are you gonna bounce around the county?
We, we talked about that, I think what we'll do with our first meeting, it'll probably like, you know, it's, it's part of the kickoff, we'll talk about how the whole committee feels about that. One of the things we're gonna do with that first meeting is kind of do the introduction, what we're trying to do, what the overall, um, mission of the, of the committee is. But then I'm gonna have us break out to do, you know, the squad analysis, straight with it, we miss everything, but rather than have all twenty people shouting out their ideas, I'm gonna have it break up into the four corners of the county, so the four corners can talk about what's happening, more, more specific of what's happening in their area. And plus, if you have a dominant two or three people in there, which I'm sure we'll have maybe more than two or three dominant people in there, you're only gonna hear from them. So by breaking it out, you'll have.
Put on each group?
Yeah. You'll only hear from one to the other, but we'll, but we'll, but the idea is to hear from each corner of the county, and then bring that all back, and then we can have a bigger picture. So, again, it's all about the bigger pictures.
Can't wait, I think it's gonna be fun.
No, it's gonna, it's gonna be good.
You know, I have to make a comment, Todd, since I've been here, I have seen your department just kind of develop, and I think we're finally utilizing your skills, and, because I don't think we were really.
You know, you know, you were not.
No, but, but I mean, I think you're, you're really coming into being here, that you're doing what you know how to do.
Did you please?
He drives this mess up.
Um, we, we, well, my.
There's a lot of stuff going on.
There's a lot of things I did when I was in Florida that, that I never had, had a chance to use, and that's just, it's just a matter of time.
But it's just, and it's just the, the way it goes, I mean, things are good, and he's so busy, he can't utilize his true skills, and then if it's too slow, then he ends up doing the minutia stuff, because maybe they don't have the skill.
Well, so, when, you know, when I was helping Jog County out, I will tell you that I would, I would, I could not, and they were trying to hire me up there and stuff like that, you know, you know how Ralph is.
No, don't.
It wasn't Ralph, it was Skip.
Well, Skip, well, Skip was no longer a commissioner, but Ralph, they're all that way, they're funny, they're, they're nice, they're a nice guy, they're really like that. But, but at the same time, you know, to Sabrina's point, the minutia, we just did, they, they, in Jog County, they just did what the, the, the average code said, we're just gonna do zoning, and we're just gonna do subdivisions, and nothing else, nothing else, and there's so much we could do to help support the townships and villages and everybody, you know what I mean? Including the commissioners, so, it's just like, oh my gosh, there's so much more you can do, there's so much more.
That's right, because we're more service oriented, and we do go above and beyond, and that's what we want.
Yeah, one of the things about that, the plan, too, is, is not just, you know, it's the big picture of what we want to be someday, but it's also the marketing, it's also a marketing tool, kind of like we showed you with, with Brimfield Township, it's gonna be such an awesome marketing tool for the county, I mean, and it can be changed and modified, and it's just gonna, it's gonna put our best foot forward to the outside world, you know, I just think it's gonna be awesome.
And that's what I like to think of, Portage County, of being forward thinking, and it starts with our level, so, and, you know, a good way to that is, you know, through the comprehensive plan, our vision, and, and we sort of set the tone for that.
Absolutely, you, well, you guys especially, you guys are leaders, so.
And as the tone changes, you can update it.
What does that mean, the commissioners change, you can update it?
You just have such a passion for what you do, I mean, it shows.
Oh, well, thank you.
UFOs and all. Yeah.
How'd that ever work out?
It's still, we're, we're still working on it.
Mayor Patrick said next year for the UFO.
Yeah, Mayor, we're gonna have a UFO festival next year.
Year or so?
Yeah, Mayor Patrick's a favorite, so.
I can't wait to see.
Got advertising in Cleveland for that.
We're, we're gonna advertise that nationally.
You know what, seriously?
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a fun, it should be a fun event, it's, you know, I had somebody, I actually had somebody yesterday with a celebrity boarder talking about it, and they just said, so long as we do the UFO and make it a fun thing, which of course, why wouldn't we, you know, because she said she was freaked out by the pictures.
Where do you see Todd's outfit he's gonna wear?
Where do you see?
Just a little satin coat hat and stuff like that.
It'll be orange and Hispanic, Hispanic, no, we have a red, no Spanx.
Oh, my. About you guys.
I know, it's a little exciting.
Some people really like the UFO, and some people are like, Lisa, like, yeah, I don't want to buy it.
I'd come naturally down, I'm just tired of hearing about it.
Yeah.
You know, he would have to tell everybody that, you know.
He's told that story how many times, though, but he has pictures, and it is neat.
I tell you, those pictures give you chills, I'm not kidding you.
I've seen him twice, but I, I, I still have an interest every time.
Well, the, the, Ellen, Zellin's brother, who saw, I guess he said, he said that, uh, he's, he's saw some more, uh, just recently, some more.
You gotta find what frequency you'll put that, so they come.
Yeah, well, like I said.
That weekend.
I just think one of these days, he's just gonna be abducted.
Well, you know, I, I'm not gonna.
For talking too much.
I'm not gonna hang out with the brother.
I can just see this, there'll be more tin foil and screen than we've ever seen at this, this, uh, event.
Well, it's just that fun.
We still got a couple of minutes, I'm sorry, it's ten twenty-seven, so we still have three minutes before we can start the public hearing, even though, you know, I've tried to jumpstart it twice.
Just get it done.
Hold back. Three minutes. Oh, I kinda got beat. Did everyone get a chance to sign in? Okay, thank you. Todd, did you sign in?
I did not.
No.
Was being passed around, I guess.
There we go. Now, there's two of them, just so you know.
There are three of them.
There's three, actually, we signed, right, Amy?
Two.
Yeah, it's, I think it should be two, but it's okay.
Right.
Oh, should I sign me a little? Did I do?
Yeah, okay, that's good.
Okay. The two that I care about.
No.
Wow, Lisa, tell us how you feel.
No, I can sign one. There's that last one, just for your.
Why is there three?
'Cause.
'Cause that was on it. Okay.
Five, because they thought five would be excessive.
Good point.
That's okay. More than married.
I think the Manaway thing was public hearing.
Oh, well, no.
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, it's ten twenty.
Ten A, do it again, yeah.
Isn't it close enough for government work? Does that look terrible out here?
No.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just kidding.
Till you get your notes.
Just kidding. Are we meeting Tuesday? Let's try not to. Let's try not to, aren't you? I mean, like, every Tuesday, we're gonna have all our meetings done in the first six months of the year, I'm serious.
No, we aren't going to Tuesday.
That's why we probably won't meet, because don't we have to be there?
It was changed.
It was changed?
Am I invited?
Well, you could go.
I could go, spectator.
What, I'm sorry, Amy, what?
It was changed, the time.
To what? Did I change it on one thirty?
One thirty in the afternoon.
Oh, I didn't know that. I think we'll wait to hear our update on our staffing report for our new positions, maybe. Okay, I'll tell you, but. Yeah, I have it. One fifteen, be there a little early.
It starts at one thirty, but. Okay, all right, we're gonna recess the Board of Commissioners, and open it up for the, um, public hearing for the Two Thousand Twenty-One Community Development Critical Infrastructure Grant uh, for Maple Grove Road and Wyndham Village, from that Lisa.
All righty, this is for public input on a, uh, critical infrastructure grant, uh, we are applying for, um, the Board of Commissioners. The village, uh, is proposing to use these funds, uh, for a project on Maple Grove Road. A total of sixteen hundred, many or few water lines will be replaced, along with fifteen hundred linear feet of sidewalk. The proposed improvement consists of replacing the entire water line service and fire hydrants along Maple Grove Road. Sidewalk and ADA ramps will be replaced, uh, which will, which provides ADA access, and spot curb repairs, uh, where service laterals need to be replaced, um, will be done. Several new water valve installations and tie-ins will complete the upgrades. Maple Grove Road serves a critical area in the village, providing access to Katherine Thomas Elementary School, which serves grades preschool through grade four. The water line is critical infrastructure to half the village with no secondary source, and serves a vulnerable population of low-mannered income residents, as well as the elementary school. The current condition is very poor, with recurrent failures and an urgent need for replacement. Um, its construction cost is estimated at four hundred and seventy-four thousand and fifty dollars, which includes, uh, twenty-five thousand for administration. The Village of Wyndham will contribute forty-eight thousand of their funds towards the cost, uh, to complete the sidewalks, ADA ramps, and curbs. Is this in a nutshell?
Does anyone have any questions?
Any public comments? Ain't nothing, move on.
Or adjourn.
Are you going to pass the resolutions after?
We have to go back and end the session. Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Role call?
Sabrina?
Yes.
Tony?
Vicky?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, we'll reconvene as the Board of Commissioners, and I'll make a motion to authorize the filing of an application for the Two Thousand Twenty-One Community Development and Critical Infrastructure Program Grant Funds, and enter into an administrative agreement with Portage County Regional Planning Commission. Second. Role call?
Sabrina?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Right, okay, we're gonna recess the Board of Commissioners.
And unfortunately, we got ten more minutes for the next one.
Yes. We'll recess until ten forty-five for the next public hearing, which is gonna be for the Critical Infrastructure Grant for Pratt Street and Ravenna.
Didn't wanna go more than any.
I'm just gonna go scratch my legs.
I was just gonna say, Doc, do you have a look?
I do, if you need a look.
Yeah, the beds clean, we sent cameras down the vents, it's just amazing, I'm just, stuck, it goes up down.
In the ducts.
Getting up quads, yeah.
Well, you've got pets, too.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And that, I was just looking at that.
That's your house?
No, no, that's, that's, that's this project.
I'm like.
I was a body, you left that there. Super interesting.
You know, I see the duck, duck masters, or whoever they are, that go out and clean like the dust and stuff, the caws and stuff? I just wonder, see, I don't have dust, and I have other than AC.
These incredibly large vacuums in the basement, and then with every duck, they have this long, they just kind of, and then they put a camera down before and afterwards, and just must have been free with this high volume suction.
Do you notice the ingredient and difference, or have you noticed?
I hadn't noticed, dust is, is the biggest thing that, you know, that's like.
Okay, have you ever had your ducks cleaned like that?
I did when I had my furnace installed.
Yeah.
Did you? Yeah, just 'cause I thought, no, it's the second furnace I've put in, and I didn't, it wasn't really a thing when I put in the first furnace. So, it's the house's third furnace, so it's like fifty years of dust.
Somebody's clogs there.
I think especially if you have a pet, it's hard to do that.
Well, there's been numerous pets over the years, so.
Tuffy probably has a lot, well, he's got long hair.
He does, I had him trimmed up pretty good yesterday, but he's a fleshward.
Where's he hiding?
No, he's not hiding, no. What did, what did I ever do to mom? Summer haircut, Tuffy.
I tell you, I sure love that boy.
I miss my dog.
But I'm just so busy, it wouldn't be fair to.
Yeah. I say I like other people's dogs, and I, I like dogs, but it's like, there's so much involved with their hair.
That's a big responsibility.
It is.
And it's expensive.
Yeah, if you take care of them, get their shots, their flea tech. He had to have an allergy shot this year, which he's never had to have before, but allergies are just so bad this year, and they worked, so.
Wow. Nothing like a dog, though, I grew up with dogs my whole entire life. This is the first year, well, went on two years that we haven't had a dog, and I do, I, I miss it. We have two cats, I'm not a fella, but it's not the same.
No, cats are so independent, I mean, they really are.
They are.
They're the ones who call, and they say, I'll keep with you later, you know.
Yeah, some days my cats are friendly, other days they're like, get out of my way.
Yeah.
Don't look there.
Very independent.
They're very moody, sometimes.
You know, years ago, I talked with people, friends, that, uh, my sister was one of them, they would spend thousands of dollars on, if there was a leg, a joint or something out of place, whatever, and I think, my gosh, why would you do that, and I gotta tell you, I would have mortgaged my house for my dog.
That's crazy. What is she doing?
That's awful, it's crazy, but you will.
I know, and I swear on Facebook, if one friend's pet dies, twenty.
Oh, yeah.
I like reading these, and I, it just makes you tear up, and you're seeing them laying there with a little paw, then they do the, I'm like, oh my gosh, it's just.
I send David every once in a while, he'll give me, he said, now, Mom, you know, Tuffy will pass someday.
Oh, no.
And I said, David, I'm not a kid, but yes, I know that.
If you say, Mom, one day you'll, you'll pass.
Yeah, he said, well, I'm just worried about you when that happens, and I said, hey, I've, I've lived through a lot of things, I can.
Is Tuffy getting my inheritance?
You know what, I thought about it. Well, that's the sad part, as much comfort and companionship they give senior citizens, it breaks my heart when the family just takes those pets and dump them off, like at the dawn warning, it's like, how could you do that to that animal?
You know.
Just breaks your heart.
The thing about birds, because my roommate has a bird.
He?
Birds live a really long time.
Oh, yeah, hundreds of years.
And people have to will their birds to people, they have to leave their bird to people of their will, because bird can very likely.
I never thought about it, I've never had one, so I didn't.
I don't like birds, you know why? When I was growing up, my best friend had a little green parakeet named Misty, and Misty had a bouncy ball, and I made the mistake of picking up Misty's ball, and she like attacked me, and I don't, no, and, and ever since, I don't like birds. But my, now, my brother does like the parrot rescues, like he has an African gray, and it, it's sad how people abuse them, and they, they get upset, they pick their feathers off.
Oh, yeah, I've heard that, I've heard that. African grays are very smart.
Oh, you should hear Isaac and, uh, what's his name, Isaac and Jake, I mean, my mom has one named Jake.
Do they talk?
Oh, I'll be on the phone to my mom, and I'm like, I'll hear beep, 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 I said, is FedEx or Amazon there? She goes, no, that's Isaac, he's imitating like a truck, you know how they make that beeping sound? She goes, no, it's really good when he does that like two, three o'clock in the morning, and, and your thing is.
My roommate's bird barks like a dog.
Oh, yeah, they mimic.
And, you know, and he would, he'll do this. Yeah.
Well, Isaac now says, come on, boy, come on, boy, because my mom has a, a American Bulldog puppy named Bubba, because he's a Chubba Bubba, and he has to, come on, boy, and it, but it sounds just like a human saying, I mean.
That might be a good protection for intruders, I don't know.
When, the thing is, this bird's cage is right in my living room, which is where my home office is.
Oh, my.
So I was on the phone with an elected official in this county, and all of a, all of a sudden, the bird says, give me a kiss. And I said, no, he doesn't wanna give you a kiss, he doesn't know you.
Give me a kiss.
My brother has fostered some, now, he has younger kids, when I say younger kids, they're probably twelve or fourteen, but he's had some birds that, boy, they have some potty mouths, because you can tell, and they've been around either their owners or abusive relationships or something, and they just boo.
Can you stop them from that?
They just, they learn to mimic, you just hope that they pick up different things to say. Yeah, if they don't hear it anymore, maybe.
Three or four more minutes. Hi, Brian, how are you?
Is it Brian?
Pat.
Patrick.
The pet lovers.
Pet lovers. What did I say, I'm gonna say my mother, Brian.
Brian Huff, that's probably our finance director.
Oh, I was gonna say, that's where, okay. I'm not losing it.
Where is it, Brian?
That's okay, Sabrina, you're okay. I don't know, I think the bird is better than that.
Well, you know, it's been a long week.
You know the story about the parrot, guy's pet parrot picked up bad habity with rotten language, so the owner decided to punish him by putting him in the freezer for a few minutes.
In the freezer?
Yeah, that's what he did, so, you know, after a few minutes, pulls the board out, and he's, okay, now, you guys quit using bad language, and he says, yes. And he says, yes, I will, but what did the chicken do?
I like that, Barb.
That is, that's good.
I didn't know you were still here, Barb. I didn't see you.
I'm usually talking a lot more.
I'm gonna have to tell that to my brother. He'll get a kick out of that.
I'm surprised you never heard that one.
Yeah, they had one named Ike. He was like Ike Turner. He was one of the ones that must have been with abusive owners. Oh, yeah, he could say some pretty foul words. One more minute, everyone. So maybe we gotta reconvene and then recess into the public hearing, or since we're already recessed?
Well, I think you have to go back.
Go back, back out.
Get Patrick, huh? Patrick, did you, you signed in?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
All three of them, or all two of them?
No, we just signed the one because he suggested that one, for this one. I didn't think it was necessary for you to sign the other one, since he wasn't here for the one for one of the villages.
He wants to show support for the other.
Yeah, we support them.
Okay, we'll go ahead and reconvene with the Board of Commissioners, and then we're going to recess, um, for a public hearing for the 2021 Community Development Critical Infrastructure Grant for Pratt Street, Pratt Street, Ravenna. Go ahead, Lisa.
Okay, Pratt Street is located on the south side of downtown Ravenna with the affected section being located between East Bean Street and East Riddle Avenue. Just so everybody can kinda get a visual, it's basically the CVS Pharmacy, between the CVS Pharmacy and the Subway Plaza, that road there. The critical driving issue for this project is water line. The water line along this road was constructed somewhere between nineteen thirty and fifty-six, and it has exceeded its fifty-year design life. The water line is only four inches in diameter, not meeting the minimum six inches to provide adequate flow to the fire hydrants. The road surface on Pratt Street is deteriorated due to age, and it was last resurfaced about eighteen years ago. The new water line will need to be placed within the roadway due to the mature trees and the tree lawns. Once the road is excavated to replace failed water lines and, and connect the water services, the road surface will need to be restored. In order to prevent having to cut into freshly paved road to make repairs to aged infrastructure in the near future, deteriorating catch basin curves and driveway aprons will be replaced prior to roadway resurfacing. Damaged sidewalks will be brought up to ADA standards as well. The construction cost of this project is estimated to be three hundred and forty thousand with an additional twenty thousand for administration costs. The city of Ravenna is seeking two hundred and seventy thousand grants to support this project and provide matching funds in the, um, thirty thousand from its storm fund, thirty thousand from its paving fund, fifteen thousand from its water fund, and fifteen thousand from their general fund to complete the balance of the improvements for the project and the funds needed to cover the cost.
Okay, um, did you want a comment?
Uh, yeah, I guess it's, it's an area that certainly needs improvement with the water line. We've got a fire hydrant on the street there that's got an out-of-service tag on it right now. Water does come out of the hydrant, but just not at the, at the volume that the fire department would like to be able to, to safely put out a fire. So they'd have to wait for a tanker truck from the, from the township to arrive to, to, to put out a fire instead of using the hydrant there. So it's certainly a, a safety issue to try and get this water line replaced. Additionally, we've had, uh, an email from one of the residents out there complaining about the water pressure and trying to, to make sure that they have adequate pressure to run a couple, a couple fixtures at the same time, so putting a newer, larger water line in will be a big improvement to the area.
Okay, thank you. Do, do we have any questions from the audience?
Do you have any idea, like, so that's just a couple blocks that they're gonna be replacing. How much of the other streets around them are under the same water pressure, or is it just that street?
It's mainly the street, this stretch here, that's still a four-inch line that hasn't been replaced recently. It goes in between Main Street and Riddle, the, uh, the water lines on Main and Riddle have both been replaced in the, in the recent, recent past. And I believe south of Riddle, continuing down, down Pratt Street, I believe they've got a, a larger water line that's been replaced not too re, not too far in the past as well. We've been trying to, trying to hit a lot of these smaller four-inch lines in residential neighborhoods that, that aren't quite up to today's standards.
How many more do you have left?
Quite a few.
More than you wanna know.
We got a couple good water line projects in every year, so, so we're making a good, good, good headway on them, but we've certainly still gotta waste again.
Okay. Is there any other questions?
Uh, yeah. Would this have an impact on the safety of the, the fire safety of the buildings around the area?
Certainly, the, uh, they're, if they wanted to use the hydrant there on Pratt Street, this would, would provide a great, greatly increased safety for, for the neighborhood in terms of some of the, the bigger buildings and the.
Commercial.
The commercial stuff. They'd probably use the hydrants along Main Street or along Riddle Avenue for, for those, and those are, uh, provide adequate water for, for those needs.
Do we have any other questions? Not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Um, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Tony seconds, roll call.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Tony.
Yes.
Vicki.
Yes.
Okay, we'll reconvene as the Board of Commissioners. And we're gonna read the resolution.
Board of Commissioners moves to authorize the filing of the application for 2021 Community Development Critical Infrastructure Program grant funds manager, enter into administrative agreement, Portage County Regional Planning Commission.
Second.
Roll call.
Tony.
Yes.
Vicki.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. We're gonna recess until public comment at eleven. Do we have public comment today? Is anyone gonna speak today? Not yet. We'll still wait till eleven, but.
We're recessing?
We'll recess till eleven until public comment. And then, who's coming in for the G one employment? Is that?
Joe.
Who is that?
I believe that's the one you just called.
Ours, okay.
You guys wanna come down and take her for a ride on my bike anytime, and I'll come to you, and see if you like her, not if I want.
Yeah, you know, that would be, that'd be fun.
I have no issue with you doing that at all.
Okay.
Just call her.
It's.
It'll have the same seat as, what you're looking at and everything.
It's, I, I'm asking her, she, she's willing to do that, 'cause she, the blue was, just tell you, no, we'll take her five, ten minutes out, just see if you feel, that'd be great.
Feel free, just give me a call, we'll, we'll make sure, bring her down, let her, we'll get her, and we'll get her on it. We have to set her up, and we'll get her on it.
Get a hoarder lift.
I'm not saying that, but the lift is available.
Well, she could, she could put her all the way, and she had, she just started walk, trying to walk normal, and we just started.
Bring in a little, little step stool, right?
She could, with her left leg, she could see him.
Okay.
Like I said, that guy was showing, slide onto this, not to.
Yeah.
Try to.
Feel, feel free.
All right, I'll, I'll tell him.
That way, at least you know what you're getting into. They're all basically the same when you get into that size.
Yeah, yeah.
They're a lot heavier than what you're used to.
What, what, mine, mine was like seven fifty, eight and a half, two, five thousand.
It's not that much, mine's eight hundred or something.
Yeah, so, so, within a hundred pounds.
Yeah.
That, that'd be pretty cool. Mine went at Army Navy store, I didn't realize was there, are you guys?
Isn't it kinda neat?
I've been in four times.
Yeah, it's pretty neat in there. I, I'd wear it about once a month just to walk.
I, I, I just like.
Yeah, they're good people in there. They do mostly online sales. They do a lot of their stuff online.
Oh, really?
Between different companies, and they do a lot of stuff online, so.
They have a pretty good selection of all the Army Navy stores I've been in.
They do.
That's, that's a, that's a pretty good.
Tell Debbie, you guys are more welcome to take that for a ride.
I'll tell her that, see if she, if her nerve will go, go with that.
Be a nice test.
That, that, it would be.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, Tracy's wanting a ride, and I can't, I just had that ham surgery.
Oh, did you have that, though?
Yeah. Well, I can't squeeze my clutch yet. I can't lunch her twice, but then it.
Hurts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Another week or so.
When you, when'd you have that?
Tomorrow'll be two weeks, six.
It's pretty good, though.
Yeah, it turned out real good.
So that's what that buddy of mine, Texas, he, he quit riding, 'cause they, they'd worked and they did some other stuff to it, but he couldn't have a whole.
Yeah.
Throttle.
That's where it was getting with me, so hopefully it's fixed now.
I think he waited too long to have his done.
Surgeons had the nerve, it was really bad in this one, I should have had it done five years ago.
Do you have decorvane or a trigger finger?
I had a trigger finger and carpal tunnel.
Oh, it's in, oh, jeez. I mean, good to get those, both those done at the same time.
September, we're doing this hand, too.
Are you ready?
Yeah, or, or October, I'm not doing it in the summer.
Right, I had a trigger finger. She's, starts changing the way she slept with her hands.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And not, not okay with it, so.
Mine was getting so, in the evening, when I was tired, if I'd grip my hands, sometimes I actually had to open it back up.
Yeah.
And he said it's rare, but on rare occasions, you do close your hand and it warms it and back up again without surgery. I said, yeah, let's just fix it.
Yeah, fix it.
Yeah, throw that, throw that by Debbie and see what she says.
I just asked her. Is she, uh? Shouldn't be all right, just a little specking, any curves or big bumps or pothole or something.
Take it, go as far as you wanna go.
Yeah, 'cause she's not, see, that, that compression fracture's really starting to bother her a lot.
We'll adjust the air ride a little bit, make it a little softer for her.
Do you do that while sitting on the bike, or do you have a, is there a control, or do you have to?
I, I have to manually do it, but if you're gonna do that, I'll.
Yeah, that, that's what.
I'll find, I got a little bit tight right now, let a little pressure out, make it a little smoother, so when you hit a bump, it's not so jarring. Yeah.
That'd be, that'd be pretty, thank you. That'd be very cool.
Yeah, and if you do, don't ride down Randfield Road.
Oh, that Randfield's bad.
Oh, yeah.
Where, where, where's that?
It's like from, um, Old Ford's down to about Saks, that strip's in there.
Okay.
If you, if you have a little two-by-fours or something on a pickup truck, and you drive down there, that'll be out in the road.
Really, that bad, huh?
Yep.
It's pretty bad. I was down, Tracy and I were down Randfield a couple weeks ago on a motorcycle before I had this done, and it was really bad.
Oh, yeah. It's.
Actually, we were going to Dumis, and we went around there and rode Randfield and stuff.
Yeah, it's.
That would stay on the big roads.
Well, see, our, our roads, or front of my house, it's nice and smooth, they're gonna go right out to fourteen, and it's all stick road, it's all good, so, yeah.
I was trying to maneuver potholes one day.
Yeah.
Front tire hit, it was full of water, hit it, it was eighteen inches deep.
Oh, my.
Bike just went down, and it stayed right up because it just sunk down to the frame. Scared that even gave us up. You see that, uh, that tire, he's getting ready to retire, Deputy in Portage, or Diaga, last Sunday, he got hit two deer on the way home.
I, I saw that.
Yeah, he, it killed both deer on sight, uh, there, and he got busted up pretty bad.
No doubt.
Yeah.
I did see that.
No public comment?
So do we have a show? We gotta wait, it's kind of. Okay, it's eleven o'clock. Do we have any public comment? Changeless? Okay, if not, um, yeah, go into executive session.
Board moves go into executive session in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 121.22, motion to enter into executive session in regards to G one, consider appointment of a public employee.
Second.
Roll call.
Tony.
Yes.
Sabrina.
Yes.
Vicki.
Yes.